Megan.
You guys ready?
Mike, can you give me the order?
I don't know. Maybe it's all great to me.
I'll call the meeting to order. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for a regular meeting on December eighteenth.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Make a motion for non-public meeting on December eighteenth, one AM to.
Motion made in second, and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Dissent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the dissent agenda.
Anything further, Michael? Nope. Motion made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public input.
We got.
Michael.
My key boy. Gonna break that.
By the way, I'm sorry, I mean. Um, petitions. Um, who voted with Compa. Um. Can I answer? Uh, I will present petition tonight. Uh, what else do I have to do?
Give it to Michael.
Thank you. I don't think I was inviting. Mike?
I understand that I only needed twenty-three signatures, which I collected about a hundred and sixty, I believe.
Is that it?
Uh, to let people know that, um, there should be a second poll in place. Uh, one being in Swansea Center and one being here at Ripcom Hall. We also, in the petition, tried to raise fifteen thousand dollars to get voting machines. And to pay the help and to have them programmed. And I hope.
Who's? Who's gonna pay for that? That's in the petition?
That's in the petition.
Okay. So you didn't raise the money, you're.
That's in the.
Looking for the taxpayers to fund it.
That's right.
Okay.
Definitely. Okay, great. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Very. Mister Durocher.
Yes, um, a question on the NADA view that said, uh, NADA place of government, have the new apartments on them as well?
Yep.
Uh, I've heard there's mold in there, is that true? Mold though?
Couldn't tell yet. Haven't heard anything.
You heard just what, again?
I think he said mold.
Mold, mold though?
Yeah.
They did experienceings, experience some when it was under construction, but I believe it was addressed. So during construction, I think there was a water. Mold issue, but I believe it's been addressed.
Has there been a sea of mold issue on the middle?
Yes.
It has, okay. So they're referred to or all compartment.
It's my understanding.
Think nothing else, we'll move on to new code enforcement officer, Chris Levy?
Yes, sir.
Love it.
Yes, sir, Lee.
Will you meet you?
Hello? Yeah, so thank y'all for, uh, the vote of confidence to, uh, take this job, I appreciate it. I retired out of federal government in Washington DC and followed my daughter up here to northern New Hampshire, so, or from, uh, northern Virginia to New Hampshire. Uh, I've lived in Swansea about a year. Uh, I look forward to getting to work here, working with community, uh, hand in hand with the, with the contract, with the contractors and everybody else to, uh, to move, uh, Swansea's business forward, so. Thank y'all very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, sir, thank you.
Chris. Bob?
I'd like to inquire on those qualifications for building inspector.
Your qualifications as a building inspector?
I'm sorry, I, I grew up, my dad was a carpenter, I grew up around buildings, uh, and, and codes all my life, so. Uh, I came from a small community where, uh, most, uh, most all the, uh. Uh, and this was back in the day when contractors did it right, so, uh, I, I know how to do, uh, uh, most. Little bit of everything, wiring, concrete, plumbing, all that stuff, and also am very familiar with the IBCs and the NECs and how to get into the, to the, to the specific code, so. Uh, shouldn't be an issue.
Great.
As a code enforcement officer.
And I did serve as a code enforcement officer in the state of Texas and Stevensville, Texas, so I've done this before.
All right.
Right, you thought he was a baker or something, huh?
No, I thought he was a chef like you.
Sorry, Chris, we can't give every new guy a lot, right?
Thanks, sir.
Steve Biddle and the West Swansea Tiff Advisory Committee Final Report.
Um, in the interest of time, uh, we. Incorporated our report in the minutes that I believe you have copies of. Uh, and.
We have.
The first two pages really consolidate our thoughts, the last two. Are the debate and the final resolution to go forward with it. Uh, to start off, I'd like to. De- delineate between two separate revenue streams. And it's important to understand that, to understand how the TIF works versus the Water District working. The TIF is a discrete revenue stream that arises. From and only from increased property values. It's apart from any operating revenue of the Water District. They're two separate items. So when you evaluate the TIF. And whether or not it will work. You have to consider whether or not the assessed values will increase to the point of paying off the debt. The committee with help from town staff drew a map, which I believe you have a copy of. Which encompasses what we believe the, at least the district first should be. The rub with the TIF comes. The only way that one could pay off the debt. Is to have significant increased property values. And the only place that that could happen is along Route ten. When we first were given the engineering study. It did not include any piping, any new piping along Route ten. Which ba- which basically leaves Route ten just as it is. And everybody, I think, understands that to bring in meaningful, high-value commercial. Uh, properties, you need public water. So if you're going to look at the TIF. You must look, in our opinion, at the pipeline along Route ten. Having said that. Uh, there is a schematic where it's possible to fund. The acquisition and improvements to the water company without use of the TIF. Now, as our charge was the TIF, we could pretty well leave it there. Uh. I'll get back into the operating revenues of the Water District because they frankly are of some concern. Whether or not they can carry the added debt. But on. Page one of the notes, we came up with a pro forma plan of finance. That contemplated various grants. Against the cost that the engineers gave us, including the new pipeline on Route ten. Now, we'll get into staging of this and whatnot. Then a brief survey of possible or probable grants. Uh, and then filling in the, uh, with the DEA loan, which is forty percent forgivable. And on the debt schedule here, it's shown for the portion that is not forgiven. Layering on three point six million of debt. On a marginally operational system right now is a big. Uh, undertaking. Just to give it some context, three point six million amortized over twenty years at four percent. As an annual debt service of two hundred and sixty thousand. Now, they don't start charging interest until you're up. But two hundred and sixty thousand is a lot of money each year. And to bring that one step down, well, if we need added usage revenue, not TIF revenue. Of two hundred and sixty K, if you used a thousand dollars a year for usage fees. That would obviously be, to make it simple, two hundred and sixty new users. Which appears to be a lot. However. There's a prospect of bringing. Um. The, um, viewpoint Mobile Home Park into it, and I believe there are a hundred and fifty. And that bringing them into it as well. According to Keith Tibold, who knows much more about grants than I do. Is a very motivating factor to grant.
To what?
To people issuing the grants, highly motivating. Uh, work fair, housing, all that other stuff. Um, and those are grants at state and federal levels. So that would take a chunk out of it, the mill would add some. There's some talk about an apartment, a small, like townhouse apartment thing being, being built there that could be of. Twenty units or so, so there's a shot there. But otherwise, you might pick up one or two users here and there, but no large numbers. If you could stretch the debt out to thirty years, it would bring the annual debt service down to two hundred thousand. Or two hundred more users. But those are the numbers you're up against with a system that right now charitably breaks even. And from an accounting sense is not a going concern. Uh. And that's a word of caution. Uh, the commercial development. Would probably not be high users of water. They want it there for the fire reasons. And perhaps for processing, but. You cannot count on heavy usage from that group. The committee felt that the town should in a investigate, um, a fee structure based on. Availability and somehow charge these commercial people higher rates. That's an undecided thing. The town would have much more latitude in how much it charges and how. Than the current water company does because they're regulated by the PUC. And the PUC frankly is not, does not like small water companies, and I think they may get tough for them. Uh, the town would be free to that burden. But there are all sorts of red flags up about how elastic the pricing is. Where you have some people who've been paying undermarket rates for years. And all of a sudden, they would be forced into at least North Swansea rates, perhaps a bit higher. So they've had a great bargain, but the system's falling apart. So. Where that elasticity in pricing goes is something that should be carefully studied by the town before getting into this. It certainly doesn't directly impact the TIF. Um. Moving on. We resolved, and you can see in the resolutions, and I'm on page two, the district should be formed. Uh, per the attached map, which you have. Uh, the district shall fund the infrastructure, in particular water and sewer.
Steve, what on the map, where is the, what's the location of the, you know, proposed pipeline? Proposed pipeline?
It's this line, it's that line right there.
No, right.
That's, that's a kind of a mistake right there, because the water actually, the water actually ends there.
But where is?
But where is it?
Yeah.
For both pipelines, this run, this, okay, that right there?
The C cords?
That would be the C cord there, actually, that would be the area that was. We probably need a connection, but we don't.
Yeah. This is down there, F M B's?
It is, it's way down there, right?
Yeah, the, the big bunnies in the. Where there's nice properties.
I don't think the second, just to jump, I don't think that second line is a mistake, I think it's to get, get it to that property.
It is, but it, but it'd have to extend further up because it doesn't come to the end of Winchester Street, which is where the water ends. It doesn't come up that far. I got you. So you've got another, I don't know, thousand feet or five hundred feet.
One of our comments is. The engineering numbers needs fine tuning here. Uh, we were sitting in Michael's office getting linear cost per linear foot and. Weighing some numbers. I felt it was important to provide a, a pro forma plan of finance. To just get an idea of the magnitude of numbers and how they relate to cost. So granted, our little TIF thing is a piece of that. But the larger piece has many, many, many moving parts. Uh, I think it's a good project, I think it's a project that should happen. Uh. But it's gonna take a lot of work. Uh, we realized the deadline was for warrant article. And tried to accelerate to that. Uh.
So the, the, um, the park has water issues, but.
Viewpoint.
Viewpoint has issues. Um, but all in stronger is that.
Once.
The condos do not have.
Condos, where is that?
That's a project just beyond, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, those, uh, those, I guess they don't, I haven't heard that they have. But I've heard that viewpoint does.
They have their own water system and their well of making water.
Viewpoint has well problems. And it turned out that viewpoint is probably the ideal place to build the water storage. Uh. And it's the second highest point. Uh, but high enough, and, um. If you'd have to work with them. Uh, the same way that the town worked with the development on Route thirty-two to bring the line down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you'd have to do a deal with them, and they would have to get a grant for that. Now, Keith felt very strongly that they could get a grant. Maybe the easiest grant of the whole lot. I'm a little worried about grants and earmarks right now with what's going on down in Looney Land, but. Uh. Uh, so what that brings us to. Is. On page two. Uh, under comments and recommendations. You have a choice as to how to craft this warrant article. And we did not come to a consensus as to how it should go. I think the majority felt you should go for both the forming the district and the bond authorization. Do it at once, get it done. However, it doesn't have to be that way. You can go to authorize the district this year and the bond next year, whatever. Uh. It. It'll have to be a choice you guys gotta make, or you can put the whole thing off all the year. Um. It's going to take some time, and I caution a fair amount of work to bring this to fruition. Uh, but again, I think people on the committee felt they, probably all of them would volunteer again to help. We all felt it was a good project. Uh, the numbers are a little scary high, but it's what it cost. Uh, we debated long and hard about the purchase price. And it's really just about where the appraised value is. And the water rights have real value here. Uh, and they do have two working wells license, which is a big deal. Uh. And a cash flow, you point they're not worth so much, but the water rights are. Uh. There are. A number of comments and banter back and forth that you can read in the minutes where the committee batted about various thoughts. But everybody came to, to together to go forward. Um. And that covers it, uh, it's not a clean-cut answer. Uh, but it became apparent that the TIF does not work without the Route ten pipe. So there's your choice. And it's not a choice that has to necessarily be made this year, but I think it should be. Uh, it'll solve the developmental problem on Route ten. And should bring in some good projects. Anything you guys wanna add?
No, you covered it good.
There you go.
Yeah.
The Route ten pipe doesn't work unless we have the storage tank, right?
No.
You can't hook up anybody.
Storage ta- tank is the key to everything, did I get that right?
You did get that right.
Without that, you don't have, well, we were all talking in pressure, but you would know this, the fire people want flow.
Yeah.
As Scott pointed out, it's about flow. And that would get you your flow. So the storage tank is. The epicenter of the whole thing.
Bob?
Uh, I agree, I, I'm fully supportive of this project, and a lot of the timing on that. I, well, I, the, uh, T I S district, I probably should, we could do it this year, but. Uh, with the other stuff on here, I'm, I'm afraid if you ask that six point four mill, it shot down, so. I'd rather see that be put off and more study put on there, seems there's a lot of questions. And also, uh, we need to have some discussion with, with the actual folks that are gonna be using this out in the. Neighborhoods here. Uh, to maybe have, uh, the mayor here, uh, attend some of the meetings and. Tell the people, you know, what's gonna happen, and just answer the basic questions that they may have. Because, uh, they're, they're the ones that are gonna be selling it to others out, out in the, uh, town. If they get bad, uh, information, it's not gonna fall well, so they need to get positive information. So they can, they'll be telling their friends and relatives about it. But I, I'd rather see this put off, so when we actually vote on it, it goes through. And not get turned down, because once it gets turned down, you're. Probably got people out.
Thank you.
Mike, didn't you talk about, um, breaking this down, maybe in phases that we purchase it and then. Take some time on, on different parts of it? Didn't you think that we could purchase it, operate it as is, and just that? You, you did say something there.
I was wondering if you could. Fully do all the improvements at once, so we're talking about really three pieces. Piece one is the six point four million to purchase and approve.
Three.
And we wouldn't have to do all the improvements at once, and you don't start paying until all the improvements.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Part two of that, to Mister Durocher's point, if that doesn't go forward or doesn't pass this year, the state is going to look to reallocate the forty percent. That's forgivable on basically a grant, so that, that doesn't mean if it's not, if it's not the year, it's not the year, but that's something to bear in mind. So part two is to, we would, you would, they, yeah, if I said, if I, we have a meeting with them in a couple of weeks, if I said, yeah, we're not going through four of the warrant articles. They're gonna go down to the next highest ranked project and look to allocate that.
Okay, I think it's important if you go back where we started in, in that list of projects, just for the, for the grant funding.
Where we were in the rankings.
Yeah, in the very beginning, we were basically at the bottom. And it through the process have come up.
Oh, correct, yeah. Yeah, I, I can't quote those numbers, but yes, that's true, we applied previously, this year we were very highly rated.
Yeah.
Based on the work that Underwood has done to work with the water company and review the data. Um, so that part, I think, is a, not a one-time shot, you could apply again, but, um. So that, that's something to bear in mind. Part two, which is what the committee is recommending, is two pieces of creating the district. Which would then put the values of that area under glass. And any increases will then go towards paying for some of these other improvements. That doesn't cost anything other than it's not gonna increase value, that'll lower the tax rate, but it's not an appropriation of tax dollars. The third piece is the million dollar other funding article, which would fund these pipe extensions further up Route ten or down Route ten. Which are really what's gonna give you that added value to Steve's point, if properties are on the water company now, even if we buy it and improve it and create the district, but we don't get water to them. You really haven't increased the, the service.
The district is at maximum usage.
Correct.
And lurking in the background, and you'll notice the recommended TIF resolution to form a district. And includes sewer, which is the second shoe to drop.
So you're looking at three articles, and I do need to know tonight whether you're moving forward with all three, because if we're doing. The bonding authorizations and creating the TIF, all those require public hearings that I need to notice by the end of the week. So I really, at least whether we're gonna, gonna, going to go forward to public hearing doesn't really necessarily commit you to. Put them on the warrant, but.
It's above my pay grade, right, but.
Could you speak to the existing TIF and where we are with that, so people?
Well, the existing TIF, just to show that TIFs are not always. Serendipitous, um, took a hit twice with revals downward. Uh, something none of us thought or. Uh, something none of us thought or expected at, at the time. So it is. I think about a hundred and sixty thousand in the hole that it owes the town. That will be quickly remedied. Two ways. One, the revale this past year. Mind you, everybody's saying it's so high, but it went down one year and was. Frankly marginal another year, so that's ten years. And all of a sudden it shot up again, and if you drew a straight line, it would look a little more normal. Uh, so that alone will pull it out of the. Uh, fire and flatly will clearly do it just by itself whenever that comes up. Which may or may not be in twenty five, I'm not. I, you know, any.
There should be some value we'll capture in twenty five, but.
And the TIF is due to be paid off in half in twenty six. Halfway down in twenty six and is gone in twenty seven. So that TIF will, unless somebody wants to renew it for something, go away. And the town will have a windfall of a lot of money. But it's a program that's worked and it's, it's something that the town can look at, it's succeeded. Yes. And we've got two projects going in and a third on its way. Yeah, and a very valuable road east west. Um, and I don't know if Flatley would have gone there without the connection over to twelve. I'm not a real estate person. I don't know either, I'm surprised. So I, there are your options. The TIF is pretty simple. It, it's gotta have the pipe. Uh, but with the pipe, it works beautifully. I guess that's the report on the TIF. Other than the committee speaking strongly backed the project.
What is the major downside of trying everything? What, what, what could, what, what could it hurt us? Really nothing, right? That's what I'm.
Unless you're worried that, to Mr. DeRocher's point, once it's gotten voted down, that you don't think you'll be able to.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was my main point. Make sure that um, all of, all proper people. Know about it and we, we get out and, and appeal property, so the, the actual users will. Know all about it and we can try to get other people in the town and all that, although they won't. Directly use it, they'll be supporting it, you know, the bond issue. We need to convince them of that. But I think, I, I think uh, holding off it wouldn't be bad at all. And uh, find two things. That's my opinion.
But if I understood correctly, the forgivable loan goes away. And it may not be there next year or the year after. And we, we have that option now. So if it gets voted down, it gets voted down, but if we, if we wait. Uh, as we learned to our chagrin, the, the project ended up somewhere around one fifty or one fifty five, but. We were as close to the bottom as you could get, and now this year we rose to the top and became eligible for that loan. If, if the. If they see that the town doesn't support it. What, what's our chance of coming back next year or the year after? And, and the real, the, the real challenge for personally, personally to me is it's a, it's a system that needs to be. Upgraded for the people, just, just for the existing users. Uh, because they're looking at ten grand just to put in a well, if, if that's what they ultimately have to do. So.
I, I agree with.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you if it, if we didn't have that forty percent forgiveness. But we do. And it's also no, not known. How long the system's gonna last as it is. It has the way it's being maintained and kept a finite engineering life. And we're skating around that right now. This is not an option of, oh, well, this is a wonderful thing, but we don't need it. Well. We need it if these people. Don't wanna start drilling their own wells. And the other stuff is. You know, all around it as to how to get there, but. It's not a, oh, we can keep on going forever the way we are. Um, I think everybody agreed that at some point it's gonna fail and then what do we do?
Again, we're talking about the wells or actually the pumps themselves. The infrastructure in the ground is pretty sound. I mean, that's valuable. If you had to do it now, if it didn't, put all that pipe.
Pump station destroys if we're pumping.
No, but I'm saying, you know, yeah, it has to be maintained, but mainly I think what we're talking about are maybe new pumps at some point or new motors. Something the wells themselves seem to be doing pretty well. The infrastructure in the ground. Is proven itself since like the sixties, so.
And before this last uh, bout of inflation. They always said a million dollars a well to develop a new well.
Help it in, yeah.
So.
And they've got a real, they've got a good source of water up there that probably isn't going away, and they've got that third well possibly could open that up at some point. But as far as the articles go, are you talking about maybe separating them? Putting the TIF as one warrant article and the uh. The borrowing uh, part of it in another article or combining?
I think that was what, that was what I.
That was one of the options. And then that as a timing sub option. It would be nice to get some. High quality development on Route ten. And it would go a long way to paying everybody's taxes. Every res- residential person's taxes.
Maybe you can explain to, how, if, if one of them goes through, one don't, how is it gonna affect the other one?
So you can create the district without any money and then if, if development increases, values increase. The money will go into basically a savings account and then eventually could go towards paying for these.
So we get that through the TIF, we can run that even if we don't even have that, right? Create a fund.
Create the district and buy.
Remember bonding is the authority vested in the board. It's not the actual borrow.
It's create the district and borrow or bond.
And to give the Board of Selectmen the authority to borrow. It's a lot different than borrowing.
Right, up to that final million.
Yeah, and, and.
To get the six hundred thousand.
And Sly, I should point out that the authority for the uh, current TIF. Was never used up. There's still. Seven or eight hundred thousand of authorized but unissued bonds. That at this point I'm sure never will be issued. So the authority to issue is often set somewhat higher. In case there's some.
Sure.
Drakonian event of some kind, but uh. The town never borrowed up to the full amount of the, of the uh. Savardog TIF.
We're getting to Jimmy's point, I guess.
Six point four million is to purchase the system.
And create the TIF.
Purchase and improve the system, create the TIF. Bar authorization to borrow two million for the expansion.
So. The first two. That was the question, if one passes and one doesn't. Would you create a TIF and not purchase a system if that didn't go?
Yeah, you could do that because we still have the sewer needs and we'll still look at some of the other. Other needs in that area that the committee didn't even really get.
Yeah, the sewer.
Sewers, other reasons, which create the district. So I think there's value in creating a district.
Right, so that's what you want, and, and.
Yeah, and that's because I was looking at making a contingency to voters. You know, we have all these parts and I'm thinking, how could, how would it affect us if we got one through and did the other? Let's think of that and. And you explained it, it's, if the TIF would go through, which costs us nothing, would be great. Because this is creating a fund to save money for future.
It's important to bear in mind that. As to sewer, there are limits as to. Acreage and. Assessed value that you can have in TIFs in your town. And if you had to overlap a sewer TIF. Over the present TIF, we probably run out of runway.
Yeah.
So you, you, you wanna authorize the TIF for both of them and. Make the resolution for use of TIF proceeds as broad as you possibly can. I'm sure the lawyers can work that out.
I wouldn't say it would, it doesn't cost you anything to create the TIF because it does indirectly in the future. The tax rate, if you create a TIF, the tax rate would be higher than if you didn't, because you are costing just some future. Value that would be going to the savings account. It's not raising money, but it's just maybe a lawyer's clarification.
I've got a question for you, Steve. You know, the. The forty percent forgiveness part of the bonding or the loans that we're talking about. Now you mentioned that. On the tip over in North Swansea, we, we have say eight hundred thousand dollars left over that you could still authorize to borrow. Say if that happened here, if it, it went through authorized to borrow with, and with that forty percent forgiveness, can that extend out through the life of the TIF?
The forty percent is a whole different transaction. It has nothing directly to do with the TIF.
But does it extend out through the TIF? I mean, does it have to be done in one year or can it be?
Uh, I think several years.
It could be several years, but don't think of like the forty percent and then we could use that for something else. And that, that whole amount has to be authorized and like to Steve's point, that, that transaction would be closed and the TIF would be.
Well, you're authorized to borrow, say, a million dollars. And. No, well, I'm just using an example. Oh, or a million dollars, and this we're talking about the forty percent loan forgiveness one. So you borrow five hundred thousand dollars and then in ten years, you borrow another five hundred thousand dollars. Does the forty percent forgiveness go for both of those?
No, it's a one shot deal.
It's a one first and one shot. You have to borrow all or, all or nothing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you could do less, but.
It's a separate borrowing than the TIF.
Okay.
So forty percent, six point four would be better than forty percent.
Yeah, of course, but it, but it has to be, you have to decide how much you wanna borrow and you borrow it that one time.
That's the other benefit you do with other funding separately is that if you had forty percent and you got grants and you borrowed less. Each grant you get would lower the amount you get forgiven, but if the other transactions are separate. Doesn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You'd be getting forty percent of less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on this, I like if it's gonna be six four, that figures out, is it about, we're gonna be responsible for about four of that and the. State will pick up the other two point four.
Yeah.
When would the state uh, send us that uh, a payment of the two point four? Once a year or every month?
I don't think there is any payment. It just comes out of what our payment would be. So your payments aren't based on the six point four, they're based on.
Three point six.
Yeah, right, the part that's not forgiven.
So the real debt's three point six. Not six point four.
No, I, I'm just feeling it would stand about a chance if it was uh. Next year and then to kind of keep it separate, then, then look at doing the sewer. Cause if you do too much once. Not bow to low, that's my bill. Is to kind of keep them separated somewhat, so they stand a chance and have a longer chance to perform with.
But it still probably makes sense to go for both of them, whether, whether the separate or combined, just because of us being so high on the list. I mean, can't help but ask if it's turned down.
Where you guys make the big bucks.
We can continue to go, except if you want to continue to discuss it further, we're gonna get to the part of you.
I, I'm certainly comfortable with the TIF in the six point four. And my question would be the million. The third article, do we, do we need that? Or is that something where we could establish the infrastructure? Bring on some of the new, the, the, the mill. Bring on the, the park, if, if they're interested, show, show faith and then go for the million in two or three years. As opposed to all three.
I think if you were going, that's the one that.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of the TIF from the six point four, but we don't have a shot at the six point four.
And then go for the infrastructure we captured too, if. If we have a system in place. You know, if somebody does wanna build on Route ten, they will say part of.
Yeah, we definitely have to take a different approach. And, and I agree with, with what Steve said, with, what we worked out with Jeremiah. And the fire station over on thirty two was a good solution, extended the water line and all parties participated.
What do you think, Mr. Board Representative to the TIF Committee?
I, I like that idea, actually. I, I think it's a great idea. I think um, we don't need to put that, the third. Piece in there right now, maybe it would help on the other end. Is that what you're thinking? I agree. I don't think it's any urgency that we need to, and then like Sly said, we could probably find better ways to raise that right now. And at least make this less confusing too, by taking one piece out. But I think the two pieces need to go in this year. I am behind putting it in. I, I don't think we have anything to lose. I think we should try it. Um, I do see Bob's idea of, you know, we put too much out there and. We could just explode on us and nothing happens, but. I hate to wait. I think this is an important thing. We gotta get rolling on, so.
I agree, I agree with Jim. Consensus for you, Mr. Chairman?
Be done with us. Today.
For now.
Past is bedtime.
A piece of milk, ready to go. Let's shut up. Nightcap.
Well, you guys did a great job. The, the last meeting was quite active. Good job.
Very good job.
Active as a contentious or?
No, no. Yeah, the discussion committee worked well. Scott was in, in invaluable.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Don't believe that.
I have a question. Article, Article six wasn't us, was it merchant in the middle of the stormwater?
Uh, which articles?
Article six.
No, we haven't got to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a more, I think the numbers, my number changed since, I think it's different than your Article six was. The new, the new uh, Article six is the one that's going away. Um, so I think that's going to be Article seven, because we got a petition zoning amendment, which I don't know if we're gonna talk about that one. All the numbers got moved down.
Yeah, my only suggestion on that is to uh. See if you, Mr. Grant Finder can find a grant to uh, help offset that one.
Well, it is a grant, actually. It's, it's a forgivable loan, so that's.
Okay, so you can't enable small one?
We got it all, we just have to get it, it just has to be put it on, but it looks like a loan, but yeah, we can talk about that when we get to the one.
Okay.
You wanted us to go down through new business? Still zoning amendments?
Yes.
Is, is this new package different than the one that came out Monday?
Correct.
Great. All, all my notes are on. You know. He changed it today.
Yesterday, actually.
So where are you?
New business. Right?
Yeah. Give us a page.
All of them, basically.
I didn't have any of this old print.
You didn't?
No, I can read this.
There you go, you're welcome. Uh, I think we're starting on page nineteen, we have. Scott and Sherry and other planning board members are present, so this is to discuss. Primarily, I think, the wetlands.
Situation.
Only commitments, but Adam's here as well, so I think you had a few remarks you wanted to start with.
I do, I, I have a little. I don't know if that's what you were talking about.
That's your page nineteen.
Handout here.
Be in the wrong order, I, they weren't numbered. They weren't numbered and I mixed them up, so I've.
That's okay, I have them in the radar, so we'll go through. I have, so these are my comments, but it doesn't include the, um. The actual amendments themselves in my comments. Does anybody want a copy of this to look at?
Just while she's doing, so this is all new, was not in the packet.
These first, page nineteen is what she brought in today and then the other. Starting on page. Twenty eight was in there.
Okay, so. So I've seen from twenty eight on, so I haven't seen this.
So we're here to talk about uh some of the amendments that are going on a warrant for um Wetlands Conservation District. And I was. Go over here and sit in the big chair.
You can stand.
I actually stand, so I kind of see everyone. All right, um. So I kind of made these handouts just because I was told I couldn't do any slides and show pretty pictures and stuff, but um. These are some of the, the comments I plan to bring January ninth to the public hearing, so I figured I'd. Put them down here in a simple way on, on paper for you. So back up a little bit and look at the purpose of the current Wetland Conservation District, that's an overlay. And it reads right now by the authority granted in New Hampshire RSA six seventy four, et cetera. Uh, and in the interest of public health, safety and general welfare, the Swansea Wetlands Conservation District is hereby enacted. To regulate the uses on those lands defined as wetlands. So then you've got A through E for the purposes, to prevent the development of structures and land uses on wetlands which would contribute to pollution of service and groundwater. To prevent destruction of natural wetlands which, which provide flood protection, groundwater recharge, pollution abatement. Augmentation of stream flow during dry periods and valuable wildlife habitat. Letter C to prevent unnecessary or excessive, excessive expenses to the town to provide and maintain essential services and utilities. Letter D to encourage those uses that can be appropriately and safely located in wetlands areas. And letter E to preserve and enhance aesthetic values associated with the wetlands. So those are the purposes that we'll refer back to a little bit later, but basically what our current. Wetland Conservation District does is three things. Right now, it just limits permanent activities within the wetlands themselves. It provides for a hundred twenty five foot setback for septic systems, which is higher than what the state requires. And it says that wetland areas will not be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. So why are we proposing to amend the conservation district? It goes back to in twenty twenty three, the planning board asked the conservation commission. Why can't we revert to the twenty five, excuse me, the seventy five foot septic setback that the state uses? That was something that Swansea voters passed, we think back in the eighties. And we didn't really have enough information to say, yes, let's get rid of that or no, let's don't. So what we did was hire Moosewood Ecological. To do two things, and both of those things, by the way, are posted on the Conservation Commission webpage. On the town website, those two reports I'm gonna be referring to. So the first thing they did was to review our natural resource ordinances and regulations. They were checking that against our master plan and also just looking to see. Do they adequately protect our resources? Do they do? What we're intending them to do, so referring back to those purposes there under the Wetland Conservation District. The second thing they did this past year was conduct a townwide wetlands evaluation, so that was something that we had them do to tell us which wetlands in town. Are the most important to us, what functions and values are they offering the, the town, as well as what sorts of stresses are we putting on our wetlands? This was something that was paid for by the Conservation Commission Fund, not part of the town budget. All this information is gonna feed into our new open space plan, which we have to hope to have done in another year. This is something that, that wasn't updated since two thousand and four, you're supposed to do every ten years, we're getting around to it now. So all this information is gonna. Feed into that. So if you look at what a conservation commission is supposed to do. Is this our business? Is this what we're supposed to do? Well. I, I stumbled across the uh. RSA thirty six A this past week, which is the authorization that the state has for conservation commissions, and it's right there in the very first paragraph. I won't read the whole thing, but. The, the crux of it is, yes, the conservation commission shall keep an index of all marshlands, swamps and all other wetlands and may recommend to the selectmen. A program for the protection development or better utilization of such areas. So this is your conservation commission in action. So what did we learn from Moosewood Ecological? Why are we wanting to amend? The Wetlands District? So during the wetlands evaluation, Moosewood identified that Swansea has three hundred and seventy four wetlands. It's a pretty wet place. We've got wooded wetlands, we've got marshes, swamps, peatlands, beaver ponds, lake shores, bernal pools. I would add stream sides to that. Um, but that's not what they looked at. So covering two thousand eight hundred and twenty four acres in Swansea. They range from really mini to three hundred and seventy one acres in size. For the comparative evaluation, though, they only chose wetlands two acres of mountain. So that narrowed it down to a hundred and seventeen wetlands covering a little more than twenty five hundred acres. And the average size that they looked at was twenty two acres. So they use the well-known um wetland evaluation method for inventorying and evaluating freshwater wetlands in New Hampshire. Um, something that they, they use GIS and fieldwork, the trained biologists go out in the field and identify. Various functions of wetlands and assign a value to those functions. Um, you can look at their summary on the uh. Our webpage, it has a lot of interesting maps and some interesting information, and that's just the summary that'll be coming out with the totally port later on. But there's a bulleted list here of the things our wetlands provide for us. Water quality maintenance and drinking water source. Which we just spent the last half an hour talking about. Groundwater recharge and discharge, flood control, wildlife and fisheries habitat and natural communities, recreation of all kinds. Visual beauty, shoreline stabilization. Educational and scientific value, and they contribute to the overall biological diversity in town. However, in this bolded part is the crux of the matter. Moosewood Ecological noted that the functions of many of our wetlands in town are compromised due to the loss of a naturally vegetated buffer. Because our wetland district overlay allows the alteration and destruction of that buffer and has no development setback in super septics. It is not fulfilling its own stated purposes. And their review of land, land use planning documents had a number of wetland related items, but the two that we. Uh, are looking at tonight are A reconsider allowed uses within the wetlands district. And B consider establishing an upland buffer ordinance. So that's what we're looking to do right now. So I have a page also on why is an upland buffer so important? If you're gonna have a healthy intact wetland, you have to have a buffer around it to protect it. This is well documented in scientific literature. What do buffers do versus just having a lawn or a parking lot there? A naturally vegetated buffer will catch and filter runoff, remove trash, sediment, phosphorus and other pollutants before they reach the bro for the marsh. Absorb rainfall, snow, melt and slow the floodwaters down, if we saw back in July of twenty twenty three. About critical habitat and corridors for wildlife. Nearly one third of New Hampshire's native wildlife depends on aquatic. And wetland habitat, and I see this every day at our house, we have game camera up. Down by our brook, we own quite a few acres ourselves along Perry Brook, and that's where the animals go. If you hunt deer or. Anything else, you know, that's where the animals go. They're always walking up and down along the brook, that's the corridor, the, the foxes, the bobcats, the deer, the scums. Ossums, everything else is down there walking up and down the brook. Buffers also shade the streams, keeping water cool for fish, providing woody debris for fish habitat, and they hold banks in place during high water events. So this little graphic down at the bottom of the page there, I got from uh Buffer Options for the Bay, which is something on the Great Bay in New Hampshire. It just gives you, it's pretty small print, but it gives you some ideas about what the difference. Excuse me, size buffers can do. When you're talking about what's a big enough buffer, why not twenty five feet, why not thirty feet, why not fifty or hundred feet? It depends on what you're trying to protect. We feel like seventy five feet's not really enough in some circumstances to protect. Certain things, but it would be a start and it would protect, for example, things like fish and amphibian eggs from hot parking lot runoff. What's important to keep in mind who is affected by the new wetlands amendments, it's people proposing new projects in town. Within seventy five feet of swamps, marshes, bogs, bernal pools, water wetlands, rivers, up to the third order and streams unless the project is exempted. In the ordinance. It does not affect people with existing projects within seventy five feet of islands. And it does not affect people on the Ashwiel at River, the South Branch, Ash Swamp or Martin Road, Swansea Lake or Wilson Pond, because they're already covered under the Shoreland Protection District. And they already have their own setback rules there.
June, could you expand on that? Cause that was gonna be one of my questions, that you're proposing a seventy five foot. Buffer around wetlands, what's the seventy five foot buffer of natural vegetation that Wilson Pond, Ashwiel and Swansea?
Okay, so those, if you, um, if you look at the way the amendments are written, um. It says, um. Amendment number nine. Uh, wetlands included but are not limited to any freshwater wetland, including marshes, swamps, bogs, bernal pools and wooded bottomlands. Excuse me, I'm getting over a pole. And any surface waters, including river streams and intermittent streams in the land under said waters. Accepting fourth order streams and designated rivers, lakes and ponds covered by section. Seven, which is Shoreland Protection District.
And, and that was the genesis of the question. Why?
Because the Shoreland Protection District already covers those areas with particular setbacks and we didn't want to. Get things too confused.
But not with regard to a natural vegetated buffer.
Right.
So why would those bodies of water be excluded?
I don't really want to exclude them, we just didn't want to make things any more necessarily complicated than they have to be. Um, we were told to keep it simple, stupid, um, so. We kind of felt like. We also need some changes to the Shoreland Protection District and the Floodplain District, given what we learned. And we might even want to think about, and we brought this up to the planning board, we might even want to think about sort of condensing. All these, because a lot of towns do into one overlay district instead of having three. Instead of having wetlands, shoreline and floodplain be separate. We can condense them all into one at some, at some point, not this year, um. But yeah, I, I would just assume have a wooded buffer on those as well, but we were, we're just trying to keep things simple for now.
Thank you.
So just, just one comment on that, um. So, you know, there are restrictions, certain areas in the Shoreland Protection Area. I can only cut my shrubs, I leave to a height of three feet, I can only raise my trees. Things cut to low branches to one third of the height of the tree. Um, but I have to take the, the tree out, it's all done on a calculation based on the caliber of the tree in, you know, a set square area. Uh, and, and that calculation has to factor it forward in adjacent areas. There are limitations there. I think the reason that some of those things are permitted along primarily lakes. Is because there's a scenic. Aspect to them as well, the people buy that property because of that scenic aspect. Not to say our wetlands are not. Pretty areas for naturalists. But they're different, right? It's some, it's different looking at something that might be a swamp, maybe a lot of mosquitoes, you don't go near there so much. Uh, as opposed to looking across a whole lake or a body of water or a river. So I, I think that's why there's a difference, if that helps.
Gotcha, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so. Under the new amendments, I have a page here about. What will be different? And obviously, if you want to get into the nitty gritty, we can look at the actual amended language. Um, but this is just hits the highlights. So the Wetland Conservation District will include an upland buffer of seventy five feet. This buffer will also become a setback for development. Buffers will be naturally vegetated. The district would explicitly cover marshes, swamps, bogs, bernal pools, and we just went over this, this part. It would. Include those things and not the uh things already covered under the Shoreland Protection District. And then we expand the language on what's allowed and not allowed, and would you like to go over that at this point? We can turn to the actual. Amendments. So if you go to, um. Yeah, it's not that page, but the actual amendments in your packet, or we can do that afterward, but. You have. Yeah.
Where's that?
I, I just had a couple of questions of what you've already.
Yes.
On, on the first page, item C, to prevent unnecessary or excessive expenses to the town to provide, maintain essential service and utilities. What's meant by that?
That's what's already in there. And I'm not completely sure what's meant by that, but, um, so the unnec- unnecessary excessive expenses. I assumed that that was um referring to. Gosh, if you, if you let the aquifer get polluted, you're gonna have to build a water treatment plant or something to that effect, um. Does anybody, Michael, do you have any other insights on that, what that meant?
No.
This was before my time, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what it means, um, and this is an example I actually gave during the planning board meeting. Um, adjacent town where I live, one of my many houses. Um, they have storage barrels that were from World War Two in a building. And forgotten about, and eventually the slot cracked, the barrels rusted and the chemical there. Ran into the aquifers, it leached into the ground, into the aquifers. Then it was discovered a half a mile away, and people were boiling water and putting their macaroni in, their macaroni was coming out blue. People started asking questions and it turned out it was actually ancient, ancient orange that was leaching in, into the aquifer. The expense for the, the town was, they either come up with a water company. They had to develop a water company. EPA came in, they took control of not only the land that was contaminated, but a rather large buffer around it. And maybe part of the reason why the seventy five foot setback might be needed, um. And literally took control of what you could do on our land. And they needed to provide water to, you know, three hundred homes. Or in probably in an area that had, I guess, was probably scattered five square miles. Um. And there was a lot of testing, there was a lot of expenses associated with that. And that's just, you know, it's probably an extreme example. But, you know, you think about property, it's unusual for you to want to put. Oh, they put that shed over there because it's out of the way, right? Right now, it could be adjacent to wetlands. When you put in that shed, oh, what do you think about? Oh, I put that old car next to it. You know, a car you've touched for thirty years now, right? I, I store some stuff behind it. I'm not saying that happens. You know, it's going to happen. I'm gonna say it has happened, and we just don't know it happening, you know, so there, you know. You have to think about things that as a community, I'm going off a little bit here, um, as a community. You know, wildlife, airway tree, the water that runs through our, our yards. They don't have boundaries, they don't have property boundaries, they, they, you know, it's up to the community to protect those. And that actually starts at a federal level and trickles all the way down to a community like this. Um, I'm not saying this amendment is perfect, um, but I think it's, it gets us, it moves us in the right direction. Um, so I didn't mean to get to that point just yet, but yeah, so there you go.
Uh, my other question, Sherry, was what? What state regulations are in place that, that govern development? In and around wetlands?
Not very many, um, you know, this, our current Wetland Conservation District. Um. You know, limits the activities within the wetlands themselves the way the state would. Um, but it doesn't go beyond what the state would do. I'm not. Authority on exactly what all the state laws are, um, I could certainly look things up and answer that question for you if you have a particular, but. Um, the septic setback for the state is seventy five feet.
But that's it. The state has no other setbacks for wetlands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Um. So looking at. Let's see, would be article amendment number ten. Has illicit uses permitted, these aren't very different from what was already there, we just reworded some things because we didn't like. The wording or understand the previous wording to some cases. So. Um, the uses permitted include. Constructing wells for water supply and man-made ponds as permitted by the DES. Wildlife habitat development and management. Conservation areas and footpaths, footbridges, and boardwalks providing for pedestrian uses. Um, provided said structures are constructed so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water and the natural contour of the wetland is preserved. Open spaces as permitted by subdivision regulations and other sections of the ordinance. Forest management, tree farming within seventy-five feet of wetlands, and then we added consistent with best management practices. Similar to agriculture, also. Uh, where it does not impair the function and values in the adjacent wetlands, consistent with best management practices. And then we changed the wording of the last item there to say, um, maintaining, repairing, or replacing existing and lawfully located. Structures, public utilities, streets, roads, and accessways providing where conforms to the general standards adopted, adopted in this section. Meaning something's there, you can fix it. Assuming you're using. Using sedimentation control and all that jazz. Do you all have any questions on any of the permitted uses?
If you own property that's along the river. And you've got to be seventy-five feet, uh, uh, leave it in principle, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Can I give you a second?
Well, we'll get into that a little bit more. We'll get into that a little bit more, but we can't, we're asking that you don't maintain a groomed lawn. You can go in and brush hog it, make sure you don't want, you don't want trees coming in, you don't have to let the trees come in, and you can go in and brush hog and keep the vegetation down. But to have a lawn that you're mowing and spraying right up to the edge of the river doesn't really protect, or the edge of the well, doesn't really protect the well.
Say if you've got a well on the property, you have to be so far from the well?
Wells are allowed, are allowed use in wetlands.
And if you have a, a, a pond that you put on your property, you say you have to be seventy-five feet from your pond?
Ponds are, um, something that's permitted in the Wetland Conservation District. But you do, you are supposed to go through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to build a pond. Um, and we felt like that was. Plenty of, you know, oversight over somebody building a pond. You already have to do that. You're supposed to. My father-in-law probably didn't.
It looks like if the pond is there, though, you have to have a seventy-foot foot area around it because it says bodies of water.
Not if it's a man-made pond, and that's what we're getting to that.
Alright, let's get to it.
Yeah. So, um, if you go to amendment number eleven, that gives you some of the, some of the no-no's. Are listed under number eleven, amendment eleven. So, no leach field, septic tank, pump chamber, or dry well within seventy-five feet of wetlands, and then there is a. Some language in there, for instance, is of septic failure. Um, we can be to replace it. Number two, um. Well, and I'll go back to, to number one, then that represents a bit of a compromise, so we're, we're allowing that one hundred and twenty-five foot septic setback to go away. That would become seventy-five feet. Septic systems are getting better and better. Um, and so we're allowing that to be something that, um. Will compromise on, get rid of that one hundred and twenty-five feet.
You know, I, I, I appreciate that. I just don't appreciate the approach. And, and the reason is that for twenty-five, whatever years that I was on the zoning board. And had to defend a hundred and twenty-five foot setback when there was no data to support it. And it was just, well, that's just the way Swansea does it. Well, and then the retort is you, you got the state engineers and. And all of that, and if they're satisfied with seventy-five feet, why is Swansea a hundred and twenty-five? And you have to sit there and turn somebody down who, who wants to utilize their property. So personally, I don't see this as giving. This is something that we never had the data or was never given to the ZDA to support a hundred and twenty-five foot setback. So I, I, I would prefer that you look at it that, uh, we're, we're going to follow state guidelines as opposed to a trade-off. Because I really think they're separate issues.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, number two, we also, um, changed that up a little bit. It, it originally said, um. The Wetland Conservation District, and then we added excluding bodies of water. And originally said will not be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. And we feel like that's a, that's a place where we can say, it's alright. To use. Wetland areas to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. Provided that seventy-five percent of the minimum required lot size is contiguous non-wetland. And that that area is sufficient in size and configuration to acquire, accommodate all your utilities and stuff. So that should make life a little easier for some people, too. Any questions about that?
We're, I, I went through and it was difficult to, to look at, even though they were colored. Uh, it was, it was challenging.
Which are, which are crossed out and which are not.
Yeah, but, um, i- in terms of where the, where the delineated. Wetlands are, that, that's where I was going. So. What, is there a, a, an ad? I, I know you, you've listed them by number. But is there an, an address list so that we know which properties are being impacted, uh, by the proposed?
You're talking about the wetland maps?
Yeah. Because, for example, if Safford Drive, the, the joke. From, uh, Dave Bergeron, who was a land use, was a land use consultant. When we were trying to keep a Swansea business in Swansea and. They, they needed five acres. And so the, the joke was, there's five dry acres. The problem is they're not contiguous. So.
Yeah.
It, or my concern is, is that. There's significant development opportunities under the current state and town regulations. That, uh, impact Safford Drive, but if Safford Drive is part of the list. And it, it, it reduces the opportunity for development that the town decided it wanted to develop when they created the fifth district. Back in ninety-seven.
Hmm.
So, uh, for. Uh, it would be very helpful for me if I knew which. Wetlands were the ones.
It's, there's no list. It's, it's all of them.
But who defines the wetland?
It's scientifically defined. It's.
But who, what, what, what authority is indicating that? Your property and your property each have wetlands on them. How, who?
Well, if you go back to, um, the language.
I, I saw that, but you also, you also, there, there was also broken down from three hundred and seventy-four properties to one hundred and seventeen properties. Two acres or greater, but what about the other properties?
Yes, that, that's not, that's not anything regulatory. That's just an example of what they found in town when they were going through.
So there's three hundred and seventy-four wetlands that are potentially impacted by this ordinance, and we don't know where they are.
No, we do know where they are. So there is, there is a map of jurisdiction of wetlands.
We don't know what it is. We, we, we don't have it. I, I didn't see G I S layer on these. Yeah, but we don't have, we don't have a list of.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Adam.
Oh, I was, um. We, we do have, uh, wetland overlays in our G I S. Um, and those are from the state. Uh, I don't know when the last time they were updated, uh, but we do have those layers on our G I S.
So that's really my question. Are we talking about a hundred and seventeen wetlands or three hundred and seventy-four?
Three hundred and seventy-four.
Well, I think. I, I don't have that overlay on, on my particular version, and I know Stefan tried to work me through it, and I, I don't always find it. Uh, but I think it's, it's really imperative that. At least for the public hearing, that, that the people whose properties are being impacted, if they're upstairs. They, they have the opportunity to know that their property is being impacted. And, and, and I go back to the other, and I appreciate what Mark said, but. If, if it's going to impact wetlands, it should impact all wetlands. If it's, if, if Scott's got a, a pond and he, he has to stay seventy-five feet away from his pond. He can't do anything within that. Agriculture shouldn't be able to go right up to the bank of the Ashwhewlet. I, I sat through a, a public hearing in, um, in Richmond when they were debating something similar, and what they wanted was twenty-five feet. No fertilizer. God, the uproar was incredible. I don't know how it, how the Warren article came out, but I think people need to know which properties are being, are going to be impacted. If, where I lived on Flatwood Mill Road, if that swale that came down from what's now Woodland Heights. Which was a wetland, Jerry Bell told me that thirty years ago, that, that was a wetland. I couldn't have built my garage, I couldn't have paved my driveway, the people that are there now couldn't mow that side of their lawn. I, I think people need to understand what kind of an impact this is going to be. Uh, on, on their properties, because it's, in, in many ways, it's a true taking. Of, and, and I can, I. You heard the attorneys would come in front of the planning board and the zoning board with this is the meeting. When they're talking about the hundred and twenty-five feet versus seventy-five feet, or you gotta have a minimum of an acre when ninety-five percent of the properties don't conform anyway. So it's a, I. I, I just think it's an all or nothing, and, and the people, but it isn't. Because agriculture is allowed to infringe on the seventy-five feet. You can't mow your lawn within the seventy-five feet. You can grub it, but you can't mow it, but a farmer can farm it. So it, it either applies or it doesn't apply. And, and that's on that, that's a philosophical aspect. From a town aspect. This is incredibly difficult to try to figure out how the town is going to regulate and enforce. And, and what the budget impact is going to be. We've got a, a gentleman here who's, who's stepping into some pretty big shoes. Uh, who, his predecessor stepped into some pretty big shoes, and, and they can't control the issues that we know we have. Never mind the issues that, that we don't really have. So I, I, I. I am so appreciative of, of the effort that's being put in, but I, I think it needs to be what you've. Mentioned a few minutes ago, which is more of a holistic approach of, of taking. In- incorporating the master plan with the zoning ordinance, with the floodplain district, with the aquifer protection, to all of that, and bringing it all in. And, and so that there's an opportunity to bring in. Consultants who develop. The Dave Bergerons of the world who said, yeah, there's five dry acres, the problem is they're not contiguous. And, and the real-world examples, because there are state regulations. I know in the developments that, that I've been involved in, there are state regulations that govern how wetlands are impacted. Not necessarily on a person's property, but if you're going to do a development, I've got one now in Hillsborough. The AOT is held up because we're trying to get a wetlands permit. And that's held up because they're backed up. So I, I do know that there's some, some state regulations.
Oh, yes, the AOT, yeah, that all comes, comes into play. Yeah.
That comes into, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to derail you.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. I'm, I'm listening. It's, um, yeah. These are not easy things. Do keep in mind, this is on new development, not old development, too.
It is until it isn't.
Right, well, then become old development eventually, but.
But it, it also, it just begs the question that, you know, why, why can my neighbor do something that I can't do? Well, you can't do it because you didn't live here then. They did.
Yeah, and that's, that's how a lot of ordinances are though, right? I mean, things are grandfathered, they're new ordinances.
Now, Bill, could I interject something? You talked about the legal aspect, and I looked into that a little bit. Now, Sherry, you have tremendous work, by the way, Sherry, in the dozen person. When you look at that, it's the taking of somebody's property. By intimate domain, basically, because our legislative, which is our town. Okay, and SB two rules, it's taken property, you're saying you can't do anything with it, so they're taking it. And under the twelfth amendment that we changed, because the, as you well, all the London debacle I had there. We straightened that intimate domain law that said, you said it was a purpose, you can't take my land for purpose. It has to be in public use. Public use is defined as a building. A tri estate or something like that, not on purpose. And it makes the two terms.
Okay.
The lawyers will tell you can't mix.
Let's, let's just move on, and then we, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, I get that part, I do. Um, but let's finish that, and some of the, as we go on, you might, we might answer a couple of these other questions that are coming up as well. Um. So. Amendment number eleven, oh, we, we're back on that now. Uh, number three. Uh, no new structure or building greater than a hundred square feet located within seventy-five feet of wetlands. Number four is no parking areas within seventy-five feet of wetlands. Number five is no underground fuel storage or tank containing hazardous materials. Number six is no soil removal or change to surface topography of soil, modification of existing drainage. Characteristics including disturbance of water levels, water table, or water runoff patterns. Number seven is no dumping, discharging, or placement of any kind. Number eight is no storage of junkyard materials or equipment such as construction equipment, vehicles, or anything containing hazardous substances. Unless housed in an allowed structure, that would be the small, the ten-by-ten structure like a covered garden shed. And number nine is all wetland buffers will be required to remain naturally vegetated or be planted to native vegetation without regular mowing. Said regular mowing, spraying of pesticides or herbicides or other activity that will damage the buffer's ability to filter in slow water entering or leaving the wetlands. So I'm going to just go back to my comments so we can kind of look at that in a little more depth. Um. I'm going to go to the page that starts under the new amendments. What are some projects you could do?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so projects you could do, and you're some examples, this is not all inclusive. You can repair or replace existing structures, driveways, utilities, and roads. You could drill a well. You can build a farm or fire pond. You can build a small structure like a garden shed, duck line, tree stand, or gazebo. You could plant a native pollinator meadow or rain garden. You could plant a crop like blueberries and elderberries. You can build brush piles, build, put up birdhouses, and otherwise manage for wildlife. You could brush hog the area to keep trees down or remove invasive species. You can build a footpath, boardwalk, or footbridge. You can plant Christmas trees or manage your forest using best management practices. You can practice agriculture using best management practices. And you can catch lots of butterflies and enjoy all the wildlife watching. What can't you do within seventy-five feet of wetlands? And these are some examples. You cannot put in a leach field or septic tank. You cannot build a building larger than a hundred square feet. Cannot create a parking lot or new driveway. You cannot dump fill or junk or park vehicles. You cannot create a mold sprayed and fertilized lawn. You cannot create a log landing or harvest timber without erosion control measures. Those are just things straight out of the best management practices. And another thing out of the best management practices would be you cannot spread manure on a frozen field. So these are just examples. And then at the bottom of that page. Is something that, uh, people also have to remember. If you have no alternative on your land but to infringe on the setback for a new project, which happens, as we know. Because of the, what you were saying about the five contiguous acres, you can apply to the ZDA. So just like any other ordinance, if you find the need, the need to violate it. There are things you can do.
And that's applying for a variance, which is different than special exception, right? So we're talking about a variance, talking about special exception.
Did you guys have any questions about those things before we move on? Um, some of the questions I get is how is this going to affect my taxes? Well, wetland acreage, and this kind of gets back to your taxes issue a little bit. Wetlands, wetland, blah, blah, wetland acreage is taxed at a lower rate. I was sat down with Nick from Marazov assessing, he said it's on a case-by-case basis, which is anywhere from twenty to sixty percent lower. And I imagine you could sit down with him and ask. Ask why yours is what it is. But it'd be lower. Anybody with ten or more unimproved acres, including wetlands, can apply for current use. And wetlands in current use are taxed at twenty-four dollars an acre. Now, this is something I want to get absolutely clear on with Marazov, but I ran into this in the current use criteria handbook like yesterday. It allows for a wetland buffer of up to a hundred feet to also be put into current use. And I have the language right here, actually.
So in, in that, we, we discussed that in our last meeting. So under those. Under that particular criterion. Does that apply for less than ten acres?
No, so you have to have, well, if you're, your wetland acreage, no matter whether you're in current use or not. According to Marazov, is taxed twenty to sixty percent lower to begin with. If you put it in current use, you have to have ten or more unimproved acres to do that. And then this says, um, page forty-four of the Current Use Criteria booklet. For wetland, assessing officials shall allow a buffer of up to a hundred feet in depth. Provided that the land within the buffer is unimproved. And number two, being left in its natural state without interference with the natural ecological processes.
The reason I ask is that came up in our last meeting. So does that apply to land that's less than ten acres? Because if, if it applies to land that's greater than.
Not, no, not, if you can't put it in current use. This buffer. Not, no, not, if you can't put it in current use, this buffer, capstation buffer doesn't apply.
Okay, cause we believe wetlands of any size can be in current use. I don't think the ten acres applies for wetlands that are unproductive. My understanding.
But the buffer can't.
But that's really what I'm just asking, is can it be?
Should I next, that's taken without Jeff's comment.
But can it be? Because what what Sherry is indicating is that she's read that it can be.
Well, I'm gonna find that current.
I think I need to sit down with Nick again, but. Yeah, I I feel like what he told me was anybody with ten or more unimproved acres can apply for current use. I think, I don't know if you can, if you have five acres and three of them are wetlands. I don't know if you can put those three in current use.
Believe you can.
What's up?
I said, I believe you can.
You think so?
Google language is dangerous, but. Wetlands can qualify for current use enrollment in New Hampshire, any amount of acres of wetlands plus a buffer of up to a hundred fifty, a hundred feet can be enrolled in current use. Wetlands are categorized by.
All right.
So.
Just, yeah, real quick to our website, uh, this does uh clarify that trackable on wetland of any size can be placed in current.
Okay.
So that is, but we're gonna, again, uh, it may be worth double checking to make sure.
You said attractive, unim-
Sorry, track, track, oh.
Has to be attractive.
It could be attractive.
Well, okay, I learn something every day.
For you.
All right. We're getting to the end of this here, but what I, I did also wanna point out that uh, I looked up, I sat down on one afternoon and looked at what all the neighboring towns have for wetland setbacks and buffers and came up with a list for you because most of our neighbors do have wetland setbacks and buffers. So Swansea is in the minority on that issue. Um. And so the list, I won't read them all, but it's Richmond, Troy, Fitzwilliam, Marlboro, Dublin, Keane, Peterborough, Jeffrey, Westmoreland, Harrisville and Sullivan. On my list here, all have varying sizes of setbacks and buffers. It was only out of the towns I looked at, I think there were maybe three other ones that didn't have something. Um. So this is not a new idea or an unusual idea. And I also just wanna say before I sit down, um, that I understand the issue of private property. I'm a private property owner. I have a farm. Um, you know, I acknowledge that it's an important issue. Um. Private property rights are important, but this is also something that, you know, we butt up against when you're talking about the public good. Public good is also important and in a society, we agree on rules that limit private property rights for the public good. So you know, you can't keep a Bengal tiger in your backyard. You can't literally run off onto your neighbor's property. You can't put a factory in a residential zone. We all agree that these are things that benefit the public good. Um. We used to allow people to straight pipe their sewage into the pond. We learned that that wasn't good, so we changed our ordinances. So as we learn more, we change things to keep the town a good place to live and a safe place to live and an attractive place to live and do business. So that's all I'll say about that. Did you guys have any other questions? I really appreciate your input on this. It's a difficult process. You can't make everybody happy. I wish you could. Um, but I I think that uh, that it's something that it's high time for in Swansea. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, because we're gonna have a public hearing on this. It's gonna be all discussed all over again at the public hearing. Just with the public hearing there, um, the the ordinances that you're proposing will have to be exactly as they were when the planning board. Um, I think it was not the last meeting, the meeting before.
Yes, we have a change.
Okay, good.
Is there anything, I mean, we we are having a a meeting, conservation commission meeting on the sixth, so if there's anything, you know, that we should be doing or thinking about at that meeting before the public hearing?
Well, we'll have a public hearing and we'll be discussing the amendments that you're proposing. And any changes other than grammatical or grammatical or something like that, um, then we'd have to have another public hearing after that.
Between there, is there time to do that between that and the one?
I'm not sure, um.
Yeah, there's a little bit of time, uh, one more. One more will be fine. Anything after that would be a tape. Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Just making one point, um, and this is true, these boards, all the boards, all the committees, you don't get public input. You know, you don't, there's, people don't go to these meetings. I might be the exception, right? Right, everyone's in the last TIF meeting, you know. Um, people will go to these meetings, you know? So sometimes they get public input, you gotta take things as far, you know?
And that's why they elect us. They elect us to go to the meetings. They elect us to understand the things they may not understand, and they elect us to read the stuff that they may not have a chance to read. And then they elect us to vote in their best interest. So keep that in mind.
But when it comes to, um, people knowing what the conservation commission, for example, or the planning board or the zoning board is doing, and you have a public meeting for them to come and learn what you're talking about and what you're trying to enact. They don't. We know that too. So how do we get them, how do we get people to be in?
I think Billy brought a very good point on this whole situation is that these people that they're gonna, in fact, should be notified. And I think a lot of people would come there, cause I think this is a pretty serious issue. And I think that all these people that are connected with this, I know if I was one of them, I know if I was one of them, I would want to fight. So I think we're making a big mistake, but we gotta figure out a way to get these people notified if this is gonna somewhere happen, because you you need people involved. Cause this is taking people's property regardless, it's.
Personally, I have no wetlands on my property. DES went to all my property because what the property took over was a junkyard at one time. So I wanted to know if anything was buried along, or I haven't wetted anything, so. Thing on the song, just working on that, a legal issue to make.
I'm just saying, I think it's gonna be very important that, like, like Billy says, I think he hit it on the head that people need to notify their affected in this. Right, Billy?
We might get people to the deliberative session. I think we're gonna need a bigger building.
First of all, gonna have to have, who's gonna maybe affect me like this?
At those points, they need to be identified. That's the person.
This, this, what you said is, I hit it on the head, man, that's the most important thing to me, what I got out of this.
Yeah, for any legal notice, I believe you have to have time until before the meeting.
I I don't think, we, you know, we don't have a legal requirement to do that. This is more ethical than.
We have our town planner here, perhaps.
So, just, just real quick, uh, so legal notices have been sent out, um, per the RSA requirements for this planning board public hearing uh, on the night. So that requires me to send out notices, uh, ten days in advance. I usually do it fourteen plus days in advance. Um, when we put the notices on our website, uh, citizens of Swansea can sign up to be notified when those notices are posted on the website. So a lot of people in town actually do get notices, uh, that are posted on the website. I don't know the percentage, it's probably not very high. I wish it was higher. Uh, but if you guys don't wait for the public to be notified, other than the legal requirements, which I already take care of, I'm happy to help out.
But the only thing I would caution is you don't wanna treat one thing differently than other. If you've notified the other hearings a certain way, I don't think you should change it just for this one, because we feel like it's important.
Right, and so per RSA requirements, this has been notified, um, to them.
At least as the official account of Swansea. If people wanna tell people about it, that's great. Tell them about everything, not too.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and it's a checkbox you can click, um, on our website. I have to figure out how to do it and maybe put it in the next newsletter.
But everyone with, like, one of these potential wetlands did not, like, get a certified letter saying, correct?
Correct.
We don't even know what that list would be.
I, it would be huge, three hundred plus parcels.
I thought the number was three hundred and fifty-four.
Yeah, it's a really big, yeah, list.
I know, I, if if I'd like to know about it, if it was gonna affect me, if I had a big enough place that I can sell. And if I found out after the fact that this ordinance went through, I'd be a little irritated, and I think you'd get a lot of people irritated. You might, you might find some lawyers lining up.
Well, we were, we we believe we've made, um, the correct amount of effort. You know, for the RSA requirements, it's been notified.
So, yeah, Bill was very clear where he just said, it wasn't, it isn't about legal, it's about, it's about, you know, trying to be a community and let everybody have an an opportunity to hear what's going on.
Do you not think that people know they have wetlands on their property?
They're right, man. You know, they should.
I think there's a, well, I mean, some people at last try to, man, we have an extra copy of those, you were.
Mark, in my, in my case, I don't know whether that swale I talked about is a wetland or not a wetland.
Yeah.
It it may be.
It might be.
But I, I, but if it is, you know, going on Jerry Gelf, but if, but if it is, then what I did, I couldn't.
That's, that's a difficult thing with the wetland thing. He's right, you know, I have a piece of property that, you know, when I packed it, I wanted it known. And and I can't find out whether it's wetland, so, you know, it's hard. It it is, Billy, you know.
The best thing was called DEES if you really wanted.
Yeah.
And the other thing is when we changed those business districts one, which, you know, I I don't think individual property owners were notified of that specifically. I think they were notified of a public hearing. So I think we have to be consistent on whatever approach we take.
Well, they know their property was in District One. They could look at the map that we sent out.
Okay, good.
Maybe we should have a new map.
Like looking at the wetland overlay district, probably.
Can they? That's, that was my question.
I'm not, I'm just, you know, playing a little sound.
And so.
For a guess.
Um, the way that each individual property owner gets notified is if it's a petition. Um, so you'll find with the petitions only amendment, uh, for the rezonal base hill, those property owners were in mine uh, because I had to notify the president of my size, uh, but it's different if it's not a petition, it's only amendment. Fun stuff.
Well, so one thing that we didn't really go over word for word was the final amendment there, which talks about we are now exempting things like manmade farm ponds, ditches, manmade swales. Um, things that were not exempted, that are not currently exempted, um, are now gonna be exempted. So if you've got something that is just a driveway ditch or a a farm pond or something like that, that's exempted from this law. You don't have to worry about that. And it, I mean, we as the conservation commission ended up having to redo the weather hill road project because of the road ditch there. Um, you know, so things like that won't be happening anymore.
Isn't it a fire pond?
What's up?
Isn't it a fire pond?
Isn't it a fire pond?
Isn't it a fire pond that you're exempting and not a farm pond?
They're both in there. It says fire pond. So any manmade pond.
Their farm and park.
Yeah. Yeah, agricultural irrigation ponds as well. Thank you, yeah. So any, anything that's basically manmade that's still being used. If it was made three hundred years ago as a farm pond and it's a great wetland, I know we're not exempting that. But if it's something that's manmade and is is used currently, that's exactly.
So if it was made when a glacier came through?
Well, that's not happening. But if the Native Americans dug it out, no, we'll, we won't, we won't exempt it.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
January meeting schedule? Before we get to, I just wanna, I just wanna express my appreciation, uh, for the, for the work that you you all put into it. I I do have some, some disagreements, but I'm totally appreciative of what you did. And, uh, the the part in there about recommending to the selectmen, my, my suggestion would be with regard to the open space updating that 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 happened sometime earlier in in the year as opposed to this, this update now. So we have an opportunity to, uh, have a better understanding and and whereas tonight was more of a knee jerk reaction. Cause I didn't see, you know, the, the, the bold print, I didn't see until uh, I sat down. The, the rest I had, I had read and I'd read the report. Uh, but I just, again, just wanna, wanna appreciate the fact that you did it and and encourage you to come to the board next year with with your recommendations.
Okay, so, thank you. I appreciate that. When, uh, so when we do up, so what you're saying is when we do update the open space plan, you want us to to come to ASAP and talk about that? Is that part of it?
I think it would be helpful, because in in your, in your mission there, you started, it was making recommendations to the selectmen. So thi- this is a little late for a recommendation.
Yeah, well, it don't, it don't happen, doesn't happen.
And I get it, you know, we, 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 we really understand that. Uh, we, we just approved the TIF district that just came together yesterday, so we, we understand that. But it can, it it's more helpful. And and to me, it's encouraging that that you, you all in your committee have have done what you've done.
I have a great share of people, thank you. Uh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
It's all balancing, you know, me being on the, it's all, having committee, you know, this committee, you know, plan board.
Trustee.
The test committee, you know. It's, it's, it's a balancing act, right? And and you never make everybody happy. You just go out, but it is in order to preserve enough family sources. Who's on water is not, it's not.
No, right, I think it was, it might have been Jane who mentioned that we have a, um, pump station right over one of our biggest aquifers. That was quite a few years ago.
Main fellow fair is right over there.
Oh, yeah, isn't that amazing? Look at those, those blue, blue, uh, circles or whatever. They're right down ten, twelve, thirty-two.
Nobody should watch it. Thirty bacon cars just sitting there and you're like, just scratch your head. That's who this guy is.
Yeah. He's working on it.
If he, if he comes back, Captain. You were supposed to go home. Thank you for listening.
We're saying, Mr. Chairman.
January meeting scheduled?
I know we're meeting Wednesday.
Which Wednesday?
This one. That's already started to.
Did you, have you had the chance to decide whether?
I don't know how long the eight will go.
But do you wanna change it to, to a Tuesday or do you wanna go earlier in the day?
I think we can just go with it for this month. And there's like being on municipal and county government, so.
That's a good one to be in.
Yeah, I think so.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
But you're still feeling you're mostly able to win this.
Yeah, for this month.
A nice new year, like.
So, just, no one to schedule us for that, did?
Yeah. No, uh, this one.
Now, you know, the schedule.
Where's the twenty-second? I see the eight, the fifteenth with twenty-seven.
Huh? You didn't get it? Then the twenty-ninth, so. Last one standing.
You guys have the meeting the next, the ninth, January. Plenty worse.
Put it on here in, here?
Okay.
A gentleman from recent, North Swansea was advocating for return to the high school.
Or.
But a deliberative.
We're gonna change it.
We'll get flavors, I think, at the budget bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, but we have to book it.
We would have to book it.
Yeah, cause we only have two options really. We can't get into the auditorium, that would be a disaster. Try to get that set up and then we met once with a special meeting in the, in the dining area.
Who we're talking about?
In the annex session.
We need a bigger place, okay? That's what.
That's what someone was advocating for. City might come to this meeting and then, so I just, I'm just the messenger. I think this will work fine, but.
Yeah, I don't think we have last year.
What happens if we do get an overload of people that can't get in?
Depends, we could potentially set something up so that they could participate from down here. Eventually, if we have way too many people, we could postpone to a date certain, but we'd have to have a location certain.
And we only have seven days.
Right, you have to do it like, you have a Saturday or.
Yeah. Ooh, that'd be a great thing. Ooh, that'd be a great thing. We had too many people?
I think we're down.
How old would that be?
It would be rare. I'm hoping. You could, Mike, we could just go be ahead of it and put a screen down, you know, and set something up. And just be ready for it. At least be ready for it. We don't use it, we don't use it. So we, and we could just set up rows of chairs in here with the balcony and that. We overdo that, that's gonna be unbelievable. I'm gonna go out the back door.
There's those stats, I'd be those stats that early.
Well, that's up to the moderator. Yeah, he really is, right?
No comment.
I didn't say a word today.
I have to work with him. So we'll continue with current, current location for trying to plan some contingency plans. I don't want to review. So as I mentioned, this burden that you have in here, uh, so we got a petition zoning amendment, which Adam kind of alluded to, so all of our numbers unfortunately are going to change. So all the amendments proposed by the planning board are in our, what Cordell recommended having a separate article for the zoning. Amendment, zoning petition, which I don't think the, the planning board hasn't had a hearing and voted on recommending or not that yet.
No, the, the planning board did not endorse that. That's why it came under the petition. So that'll be on our ninth, the meeting, uh, the next meeting night, that will be on too, but there's not much about it. The planning board really can't change anything on it because it came in under petition.
I think we still need to know if you recommend it or not.
We'll still, we'll still vote, yeah, but it'll still, whether we recommend it or not, still goes on the board.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah. We didn't endorse it because it was too much like spot zoning. And if the planning board gets into spot zoning, then everybody's gonna be in the planning board saying, well, why my property do like this, that, or like that. So decided not to touch it.
It's a lot of people up and on so.
And my opinion.
I believe that tank costs.
And what did you tell them? Come to the hearing, right?
I did.
Uh, so again, I'm gonna be listing numbers that if you have a prior version, might be different, but then Article Four is the fire station article with the numbers we got, I think, last meeting. So those are entered in here. So it's looking at a bond of two point nine million total cost of.
I really think we need to revisit that.
You need to tell me tonight what we'll post.
I, I think we put a cap on it to three point five. Just hon- honestly believe through site work and whether other aspects we can knock four hundred off. And then, and then work on that, but I, I truly believe three point five should be our cap. So the bond will be two point five, however.
You wanna raise it more, lower it?
I agree with that too. I think that's the number.
Well, well, eleven percent off, but.
So you wanna go from two point nine to two point five?
Yeah.
I, I, I totally agree with that. It's a good idea.
Oh, we got a shot in the pence.
I do with the uh expert's opinions unless you tell me different.
You can find.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, don't, don't come, don't come crying in me if you don't have enough money to put in the floor or whatever.
I used to be able to dream of those days. Now.
Right, I'm just gonna say, Bill, stop this.
It's over my objection, so.
Come on, Bill. We gotta go.
All right, so we'll revise that.
Yeah, Michael, don't come crying to me. You got no floor.
Can't afford the light bulb.
That's what we call rolling the dice.
I'm gonna save my comments for the deliberative session.
Uh-oh. You don't think we should do that?
Start his mic off.
Well, we don't have control of that meeting. It's the moderator's meeting.
Can we do that tonight? Can we lower that to punch up? Are you in too?
Yeah.
Now, even, even at that three ninety, you've left out some stuff. Uh, they've left, I mean, they're, they should, actually, it should be the three point nine six. That shouldn't be higher than that. It should be over four because they've, they've left out, they've left out some things that, they've left out that uh washing machine. And uh they, they think that, they think they're gonna scrape the top slay off. They're saying that, um, and reuse it. And that, then the water, the fifty thousand of the water connection, that's not figured in there. So you're up over four. So that three nine should be up over four. That, 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 if you, that if you've got.
Water's already at the property.
No, the water, the water is next door.
No, that's the property. They extended it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that's done.
So the fire plug is, so the water is right, okay.
So we don't have to bother the neighbor. We can just hook up.
Oh, so you put a fire plug up front? Yeah, you put a fire plug up front.
No. It's just, it's blocked off, the, the pipe ends there.
Yeah.
We just need a little section of pipe to go to the building, right? Hey.
Okay, three point five total. Um, so next is new Article Five, which is the six point four million to purchase and approve the West Swansea Water Company. So that one we're sticking with because that's the forty percent forgivable.
Can I ask, can we put ver- verbi- like, can, can we put it in there that forty percent is forgivable? I mean, people's.
No, if you look at this version, which I haven't got, this is pre, pre legal and pre uh D R A, but I've added, this article is expected to use a low interest loan from the drinking water state revolving loan fund with forty percent principal forgiveness. Payments on this note are expected to be accounted for in a water enterprise fund paid by the water system users through user fees. So we'll see if that can get through legal, but that's what I'm trying to put in there.
And there you go. You try.
Nice. Um.
It'll be fleshed out for the voter guide. You know, that'll be more specific to what, yeah.
So new Article Six is the one that we're removing. That was the one million for the TIF funding perk. We'll still get to creating TIF down. So now these numbers are gonna change because that one's gonna go away. Article Seven is the one Mr. DeRocher had asked about. So that's a hundred thousand dollars um for a stormwater uh capital improvement plan. My way of explaining this is this allows us to do a study that's gonna allow us more opportunities for, for grant funding. Um, so I have the, the letters, letter here from the state that talks about how even if it's, I can happy to provide a copy of this or any other data, but unfortunately, even though it's forgive, principal forgiveness, which is principal is the amount you owe. Um, you still have to have the borrowing authority. So we've had a few of these, the solar relay, the storm, the wastewater asset management plan. Um, so it's just a quirk about the state requires these, they require them to be loans, even if they're forgiving the loan. Um, so can't call it a grant, but it's effectively a grant.
Yeah, I, I guess I was reading it here that the town will, the town will both reason, the town will open race the sum up. So the town is gonna have to raise that hundred thousand. And my point was, are you able to get a grant to apply towards that? So maybe we only pay sixty thousand and get a grant for forty. That's sort of a score of that.
Right, we're not going to pay anything. It's going, the whole amount. We borrow it and then they forgive it. It's just weird, but it's hard to explain that because it doesn't look like that.
No.
But it looks like, like you said, it looks like we're borrowing.
But the voter guide will say there would be no tax impact.
Yeah, and I did, again, my kind of wordsmith thing, I added on this one, this project is, is expected to receive a hundred percent principal forgiveness. Uh.
That's true.
Is there the ability to put in what, what slide just said?
What's that?
On the voter guide, I think. Oh, yeah, in the, in the article itself, we can. No impact on the tax rate?
Well, we don't, we don't, so sometimes do have tax impact on articles. That's not something we do. So kind of in light of our discussion before, I think if you, if we wanna have that, I think it's fine, but I think we should add it on everything, not just selectively.
Good, I'm good with that. I must be up this.
I've got you one egg a day.
One egg a day, yeah. We tried that.
So you see, what this suggestion is add that to everything? That'd be great.
If there is a tax impact, you gotta say it's. But I add so much to. It'd be great to put in seven point six million dollar budget. No, no impact on the tax rate. That'd be great.
You said put it in there.
Anyway.
Do you wanna add the tax impacts or?
So in other words, it's, it's both sides.
Correct. So you would say it's no tax impact on, I mean, we put it, it's the last one, put it in the voter guide, but if you wanna put it on the I think you have to vote, the town meeting can vote to do it. I think the board can vote to do it, but, or we could discuss it more next meeting if you want. We still have a little bit of time.
I just, i- if, if there's the ability and you do no tax impact, leave it at that. It makes this much clearer.
I can, I can talk to Cordell when we go over the one, but I think if you do it, I think you do it. Uh, so moving on, again, my number can be different. Article Eight is the budget. Uh, no changes there. I still have TBDs in for the numbers. We're not that, watched out data reviewed next week, so you can be prepared to hear. Article Nine, no change. This is the first of the expendable trust, the capital reserve funds. Um, one item that she didn't bring up when he was here, but Mr. Biddle asked about separating out the gold, the red, the green child, which we had, we had that separate for two years and then last year it was included. So again, it's your discretion if you wanna have it separate or or included. So that would break it out.
If we separate it, does, does it get clarified that it's seventy five thousand dependent upon a, a, a match?
He wanted that too, but I don't think you can do that because I think you're appropriating, unless you change, change it from going into the capital reserve fund. If you wanna make a straight appropriation, you could have those contingencies. Otherwise, if you're putting it in the capital reserve fund, select board is agents to expend. So it's it's your understanding of the conditions. If you wanna make it a special warrant article that says hundred fifty thousand, seventy five from taxation and seventy five from grants. And I think you would need to get, then it would be tied like that. So it's up to your, how, how you wanna, up to your discretion. How you wanna word it?
We can push it out into deliberative?
Can't add articles up to deliberative?
No, no, I'm saying just let people know that the idea behind, you know, if anybody does question especially, the idea behind that particular deposit amount is that it's seed money to match grants and we're not just gonna spend. So do you want it this way or as a separate article? They own separate articles. Either way, we're subject to amendment from the floor.
Correct. You don't have to decide on that because that doesn't require any per se, the noticing, I really need the answers tonight. So you, you can continue to ponder that. I'd like to know for the budget area at least, more how presenting it. Um.
But we know we're gonna present it just the way you would slide discussing.
Well, I'm saying, I have my power point of the article numbers of, if it's going to be accepted, but yeah, how it's going to be discussed, correct? We know that. Uh, Article Ten, again, no change. That's the D P W related expendable trust capital reserves. Article Eleven is our fire station contingency backup plan, saving three hundred thousand if the, oh, I can change that. So that's contingent. If, if the fire station project passes, we don't, we won't say how much money, it passes. But this is just so we can continue to say about that it doesn't get approved. Um, Article Twelve is the creation of the TIF district. So that's what we talked about that we're going to keep, not with borrowing, but just creating it. Article Thirteen, I'm still not sure if we need, but should have answered before next week. It's would be to create a waterfront to account for the water company expenses if it gets approved. That's another one where the numbers are changed that they tied to. So that one might go. Article Fourteen, in light of our discussion with the county last meeting, um, so I just used a place older of eighty thousand to save in the ambulance expendable trust fund, but I didn't know that news of what we're looking at impacted your thoughts on that at all?
What are we going to do now with this eighteen thousand?
We saved forty last year, so that would put us at.
One twenty? It's a little less than half. Lot less than half. Although, including what we're currently paying, we're building things.
But if we do one twenty this year and I plan on one twenty next year, that'd be.
When's it then again? Twenty six? So you go just yet and next year at eighty and eighty, then it's one sixty and. The one twenty?
One hundred or one twenty?
Wow.
Do we have any wiggle room in the fund balance after the uh adjustment?
Yeah, I don't think twenty or forty thousand is really. Break the bank.
I don't think.
Do you wanna go one? One twenty?
One, one hundred.
Good now.
Yeah. I think it's consensus. Um, Article Fifteen also no change, but the um commercial industrial tax exemptions re adopting. Sixteen, I believe that was on there, receiving other petition we received for go to a five member board. Now we will add this one, we'll give our new certain thing. Uh, maybe sixteen would get almost disappearing, but we'll get a new one on the end.
That will be Michael Miles.
Correct. And I does have a appropriation like he was mentioning. So there is a dollar value of that.
Can we be prepared for any discussion on that to what the actual cost would be?
Yes, I'll work with the town clerk.
You gotta bring that up?
It, it'll be discussed, yeah. We're gonna have a real staff issue.
The last election, working with Bruce, he said he had enough people. I don't know what his standards are, but that's what he told me.
Yes, but if we, for Michael Miles, that we're gonna have to step here and there.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, he had enough to staff.
That's what he told me. I see a lot of people that have worked a half a day. I don't know how many people would be willing to work a whole day here. And how many people would take that this place gets some pay to twenty seven, with a third of the town over there. Probably gonna have to have two more warning machines.
Yeah, he, he mentioned that in there.
What did he say about the thousand dollars?
School's gonna have to.
They would raise money? What is it actually?
The school will have to have people. They're gonna have to have their moderator.
We can't afford him.
No, they won't have to have a chair.
Uh, what's that?
They wouldn't have that monitor here.
Sure they would.
Why would the school have that monitors here?
You're voting here, right? The school budget?
It says, we, the people of Swansea petition to add petition the town to add a second polling location for all voting, local and federal, at seventeen Main Street Woodcomb Mall to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the additional costs of boat counting machines, programming and staffing with the addition to be completed by the next, even year election.
All voting. So the voting, we need somebody here.
We had a monitor from our last election. I wasn't where we had one there.
You had people collecting the school ballots.
Well, okay, that's what you made clerks. Yeah.
Okay, well.
But I think of my, I think of Bruce.
The moderator?
Yeah, moderator.
Right. They have a moderator for the school too.
I am.
He goes to six different places, right?
It, it's gonna be seven.
I'll be seven, I'll be seven.
I don't know, I think, I deep dive needs to be to make sure you got enough staff. Somebody's gotta do that.
You did it.
They're not, they're not cheap.
No. Just barely come this street many times.
Well, you also gotta pay the staff.
What is your staff and?
The best part is, I think the person behind this petition isn't gonna be able to vote here. Yeah. He's not in this district.
He can solve hills, right? Keep a traditional address.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I don't think he's in the West Swansea district. Doesn't matter, it's where he hangs his hat.
I, I think they could use the post office lock, so.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, they go residence.
But, but you have to vote over here.
Why's that?
I don't know, just came up.
Gets to drive the districts.
It doesn't really matter, if I work there or I work here, so. First thing, you guys.
You gotta vote Winchester. You gotta vote Winchester.
I'm not even allowing.
Chester, Chesterfield.
You have black ball from Winchester?
Musical.
I think a blacklist, huh?
What else we got?
Intersection looks clean.
Really, no, no, I'm talking about this. I'm sorry, I was thinking of something different. Route ten? What is it, two thousand or something? It was an accounting of what we've spent so far. And that's just for the sideboard, sorry.
So this is where the dam is up here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. And this is the current. So this is the kind of, uh, yeah, and that's where Robertson's is.
Okay.
This is the.
Wow.
I don't know, it seems like a, on price.
You can have this.
Why do we need it?
We don't, state to state, what?
Oh, the states who did.
He's on the. We gotta represent it because Swansea factors. Just providing an update.
I see.
No action needed, unless you want to, but.
Do you know the reasons why they didn't do that?
The project, well, I think what prompted is they wanna re- reconstruct the bridge, which is a kind of a hump in the road, if you've ever driven over it.
Oh, yeah.
So you come up, you're trying to take a right or certainly a left, you're taking your, raising your hands from Swansea back road onto one on one, so it's a tread.
If you almost can't see the cars coming over there, huh?
Been a lot of accidents.
It's either, it's either worse than North Winchester Street in Real Castle.
I see.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So you're just basically showing us what's coming.
That's what this is. That's what they're proposing.
But all he does is run.
Oh, that ox, that green dot is around about. I'm gonna go ahead of that.
They worked out.
I know, I love them.
It's unnecessary.
Squads on that side.
That's why.
You know someone parked too close, that's bad.
Any more public input? One last bite of the apple?
Well, I didn't know, anybody, we know O P D, which is the, uh, 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 Office of Planning Development, is having a webinar. Uh, I figured at the date now, from the last six rows, which we've had submission with here. We, so, so might be good if we go look at that.
It's live or it's?
Change the weapon recording, so it's something you go into anytime, or is it? Well, once the webinar is done, usually they will pull them out of the, like, as I have.
And put that out, do we, you're gonna put it out to everybody?
I did.
Thanks. We did, yeah.
I don't.
No, we had changed our mind, we do, uh, we do have an op stick.
Oh, we do.
For, uh.
Yeah, we had a record, you're bringing this up now, but, you guys can tell me about, um, I wanted to just bring up when Kathy was here about subjects and, I don't know, where did we leave off the battle?
Still being discussed.
It is, still being discussed, I think. I just wanna know what we, did we follow up on that, or what, I know it was spread to, which.
She's still working. She's doing a good job.
Yeah, cause she, she kind of wanted to ask where we stand to, you know, she, she emailed you, she said.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. I'm just trying to get updated on that song.
There's new stuff coming down, have, have you talked to Chad lately? Chad Brandon?
Maybe, no, I haven't, you were Michael.
He said there's some new, new data coming out from the state regarding these systems, that, that might
might. Even closer than seventy five feet? Oh, really?
You said seven feet, right?
But no, and it depends on the soil conditions, ultimately, you know, so, yeah, they should revamp those a little bit.
Hey, we do have a non-public tonight, so, thanks for coming out. Good to see you, Georgie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, guys. We're gonna do, um, New Year's Eve, like, ban to every night, and then we're gonna do Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Like, you give Patty one of you stuff?
No, that's, uh, it's got to go for my mother, and go over to her place for New Year's.
Is that right?
Yeah, let's give it to Chinese.
Who say night, if you want, I can make you a nice dinner in those places, and we're gonna have plenty of food, and tell me what you want, I'll put it aside, and then I'll I, it's not even a big deal.
Maybe I can come in Tuesday and just get it to go.
There you go, and we'll make it, we'll design it, and couple with things like that, and then she can put the microwave, warm up. Come up with a meal that she likes. Do that, I'll take care of it, we'll pack it up nice for her, and then she can put it in the microwave. I mean, we've got nice lasagnas, I don't know if she likes lasagna. Fish is hard to bring, eventually, pot roast would be a favorite for one of them. The mashed potatoes and the gravy. Yeah, he, he could, but I'll do a nice gravy on the side, and then we'll do a mash, and then I'll contain it with the bits and then the pot roast.
Yeah. Spacious office.
You have something you can have a share about?
That's right, I, I'm used to being in the dungeon.
Eventually, we get the fire station out of the. Do we do non-public? What, what are you going on?
I'm, I'm, I'm very, uh.
Well, I would really.
I'll make the motion.